Hey, Minot. 2020 is the year for more. Yes, it's the U.S. Census season, and with it, Minot could see more. More opportunities for business, more federal funding for roads, for our schools, and for our community. Take part in something more. Take the census, because for us, more means more. Visit minotnd.org to learn more.
Well, good afternoon. It is noon, Monday, April 20th, for a special city council meeting. And roll call, please.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Here.
Padugula?
Here.
Straight?
Here.
Wolski?
Here.
Sitma?
Here.
Item number two is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, once again. A special city council meeting was called this morning shortly around 9 o'clock citing a couple of aldermen wishing to act, and this is item number three. Receive and file the final report for the city independent council's investigation into the allegations of a hostile work environment. For brief overview here, on March 9th, 2020, the city of Minot Council voted 5 to 2 to hire the independent council to investigate whether a hostile working environment exists within the city, primarily among the department heads, also referred to as the executive team and the city manager, Mr. Tom Berry. Concerns about the hostile working environment were then investigated in a 24-page report that included three exhibits on a final draft, a final copy that was then sent out to all of the aldermen this morning at approximately 10:51 this morning, and was all received by all of the aldermen as well, and that has also been sent to our city clerk. Item number four is consideration of the recommendations of the independent report, including the employment status of the city manager. For reference, there were two different recommendations that came with the final report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move item three, that we receive and file the final report of the city's independent council, of the city's independent council's investigation into allegations of a hostile work environment.
Second. We have motion and second to receive and file. Any discussion? Alderman Padugula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to express my support for receiving the report. I also did want to inquire about the circumstances of us not getting it, the final draft version, until this morning. My understanding is that the report was sent out by our consultant on Wednesday. I personally did not have a chance to get it until Friday afternoon after I had to essentially demand for its release. I found out of the existence of this thing by accident. When I found out about it, I contacted you and asked for it, well, more than asked, insisted on getting a copy of it, and you very nicely complied. You very nicely responded and asked the consultant to send me the report, which I received, and I've been reading it ever since. But I'm concerned about the time lag from Wednesday, when the report was given reportedly to the mayor and to the city manager, excuse me, city manager, the city council president. It would have been nice to have had that earlier.
Alderman Padugula, the final draft was not, was not sent out on Wednesday. It was not sent out till this morning at 10:51 for the final draft, or for the final documentation there. The initial draft was sent out, and that was a conversation that Ms. Monson had with myself, and I'm not sure if that was the same message that was sent to the city council president, that when the initial draft was done, that it would be sent out to the executive team for a quick review and a short follow-up phone call, which then also did take place this morning. And then after that, a final draft would be released to the full council for consideration, also under the assumption that some time would be taken to then go through the entire final release.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor. I don't recall any understanding of when we gave her the charge to submit the report would be that it would be sent to us simultaneously. She pointed out that there were no substantive changes, that the initial draft was essentially the final draft. You know, if you're understanding whether it was different, I wasn't privy to that, but it, the report was out Wednesday, and I wish I would have had a chance to look at it earlier, but, you know, so be it. There's nothing we can do to undo that. I appreciate your clarification.
Any further discussion? The motion is to accept and file. Please call the roll.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we are on to number four, the recommendations for the independent council report, including the employment status of the city manager. I would look for a motion for item number four for consideration. Alderman Padugula.
I would move that we consider the recommendations of the independent, excuse me, the independent council, and I guess I would like to proceed in as discreet and face-saving a manner as possible. I can offer a second part of that, depending on what our discussion shows, and I have a second part prepared, but I'd like to handle this as discreetly and in as face-saving a manner as possible. Some people may see it as airing of our dirty linen. I'm not so sure that's what the case is, but I'd like to avoid a full airing of what happened, which is pretty dismal. You know, the report, I think, speaks for itself. I'd like to proceed in a more tactful manner, but if people want to hear about it and our thoughts about it and hear a motion from me, I'd be happy to do that.
Alderman Padugula, was that a motion for consideration, or was that a motion for other?
It was a motion for consideration at this point.
We have a motion for consideration. Is there a second?
I'd like to ask Alderman Padugula to clarify his motion.
I think what's in the report is very, very negative and critical, and I would rather, again, be tactful and discreet and offer a face-saving way out, a conciliatory kind of solution. I'd be happy to talk about the process and what the content of the report is. Again, I don't want to inflame the situation further. If you would like, I would be more than happy. I have five things I want to say about the process that got us here, and I have, you know, five or six things I want to say about what's in the report. You know, I think people need to read it and make up their own minds. I've read it, I've studied it, I've talked about it, I've pondered it, and I have my own conclusions I've come to. I'd be happy to share those if you'd like.
We have motion for consideration on the report. Oh, second. Second by Alderman Wolski. Alderman Padugula.
The report is probably the most distressing thing that I've read in all of the total of 20 years I've served on the council, and I want to divide up my comments into two areas. One is the process of what happened, and the second is the specific content, the specific recommendations. And again, I want to do this in as tactful and face-saving a manner as possible. I have five comments regarding the process. The first comment is that problems were evident for a long time in terms of the management style and behavior and conduct of the city manager. That was not quite a revelation to me, but that was a new finding. Things were going wrong as far back as 2017. This is not something that just popped up. Second comment is that these things were not shared with us, or at least not with me. Third comment is it appears that many of the issues were actively concealed, or that was the end result. I don't know what people's motives were, but the end result was information was kept from us, significant information was kept from us. Fourth comment is that the particular problems, I think, came to a head around the time of the contract renewal for the city manager last November. And this is where it gets very, very unpleasant, and I want to keep it as civil and as face-saving as possible. The report asserts, based on a very lengthy investigation, that complaints were made by staff to two members of this body, and apparently they were not passed along to the body as an entirety, and apparently nothing was done. We, at least I voted in favor of the city manager's contract. There was one vote in opposition. I had mixed feelings, but I voted for it, I think, under false pretenses. The final comment I'd make about the process is the problem of keeping things from the entire council has continued to the present time. Whether that's been deliberate or accidental, or whether there's a justification for it, you know, I'm not sure it's all that critical. The point is, we haven't had information that we've needed, and that happened, I think, as early as, or as recently as over the weekend, when again, we didn't receive the draft of the report. I mean, that's splitting hairs, whether it was initial draft or the final draft. It was the report, and would have been nice to have seen it, and it disadvantages us who don't see it. It advantages people who do see it and have the right to act on it, to consult with other people, to disseminate it perhaps. I've not done that. I've not even talked with my spouse about the contents of the report. So I think there's some issues of how this whole thing has been handled, and it's very disturbing to me. Now, moving on to the content of the report, and again, I'll take a pause for a second here, because I don't want to say bad things about people, but the findings of the independent outside council are damning, in my, in my view. They reflect poorly on one particular city employee, and they reflect poorly on some of us, if not all of us, in some fashion, on the council. Her findings are sevenfold. Finding number one is that there clearly was a hostile work environment with harassment of several employees. Finding number two, there were efforts to conceal this and serious personnel and management problems, or put it this way, the end result was concealment, was not disclosure. Three, there were very serious violations of city policies. Four, according to the independent outside council, there were violations of employee constitutional rights, particularly the right of free speech and free association. Five, and very disturbingly, in her opinion, there were violations of state law in terms of treatment of employees. Six, the city manager and the city are vulnerable to lawsuits and continue to be vulnerable. It's not clear to what the extent of that vulnerability is, but our duty as aldermen is to watch out for the welfare of the city, and if there's a threat to that welfare, whether from a flood or from some person walking around shooting people, or fire, or whatever, we have to respond to that threat, and it's clear that we have liability. Hopefully, nothing will happen, but we have to make sure that, that we're as safe as possible. And finally, and this is the, this is the really tough part for me, because I've spoke in favor of what the city manager has done from the beginning. I think next to yourself, Mr. Mayor, I've been his most public supporter. I've done nothing to disparage or undermine him in any fashion. I've resisted numerous attempts by people in the community to say negative things about him, to malign him, to align myself with them, against him. I've repeatedly argued for the chain of command and the need to follow our procedures and not to go on witch hunts, or on rumors, or on accusations. This is where it becomes very challenging for me, because the actions that are described in the report, if they are indeed true, are very, very disturbing. And the final point I'd make about her findings is, quote, this is a recommendation, she has other recommendations about, you know, revising our policies and procedures so we don't have this kind of a problem again. Her final comment is, quote, "Termination is the only appropriate solution," close quote. That's something I've hesitated to do, and I am very uncomfortable with that, but I think the evidence, as she lays it out, and what I've personally heard from employees that I trust, information that came out that led to the push for the investigation, is very disturbing, and I can't walk away from that, and I can't ignore that. And the final thing is that I would like to offer a conciliatory and face-saving way out. The city manager, I think, is aware of the report. He's certainly aware of the, he's had the chance to read the contents. He's certainly aware of the behavior in question, the issues in question. He was there. I eventually would offer the motion of offering him the face-saving way out, of giving him the opportunity to resign his position effective immediately, rather than engaging in a protracted struggle that will, I think, make him look bad, that will reflect negatively upon the city, and will cost the taxpayers money. The facts that Ms. Monson points out, again, as the result of an independent, very thorough investigation, are very disturbing and are very damaging, and I think that's, to be honest, the best way out, to have a parting of the ways. This didn't work out. It wasn't a good match. We may have to face some consequences later. You know, part of me says, you know, this is unacceptable conduct. If I saw this conduct in any other employee, I'd say termination immediately, and maybe I still have a soft spot in my heart for Mr. Berry. And I certainly, he's a very bright man, very capable man. He's done a lot of good things for the city, and I think everybody recognizes that. But I, to spare him and to spare us further embarrassment, I guess I'm, I'm going to be asking him to, I'm going to be extending to him the offer, suggesting to extend him the offer of resigning, to put this matter to an end and kind of move on from here. I never thought I'd have to say these kinds of things. I never thought I'd have to say them publicly, but in my mind, I think we need to follow the recommendations of the, of the independent, independent council.
Further discussion? Alderman Wolski.
I was just going to offer to Alderman Padugula that if you wanted to clarify his motion to...
Can't hear you.
...offer that if you wanted to clarify your motion or add an amendment to essentially reflect the conclusion you reached at the very end, I would be a second to either.
Certainly. I move that we offer the city manager the opportunity to resign his position as city manager of the city of Minot.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? I would look to Mr. Berry for comments on his own behalf, as I will let Alderman Padugula know that Mr. Berry did not have the report till shortly after the 11 o'clock hour this morning, per Ms. Monson's...
Makes it feel more comfortable. Thank you.
So, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to address you. Thank you for your comments, Alderman Padugula. I know this is hard for you. This is extremely hard for me. I think it's appropriate for me to speak now. As you know, I have been intentionally silent on this matter. I've been silent on this matter because these are personnel matters, and until now, we have used discretion when dealing with such sensitive situations. We've never put them on display like we're doing right now. I find this all highly suspect and extraordinarily disconcerting. Certain members of the council launched an investigation without any complaints being filed, or let alone coming to me to express any concerns whatsoever. To my knowledge, no staff member has made any criticism or filed any grievance or otherwise made their concerns known to myself, the HR director, the mayor, the Civil Service Commission, or the officers of the city council. Having never been informed of any grievance in my time with the city, any grievance not brought to me by a council member, or the staff members, or the city human resources director, I have not been given an opportunity to address or let alone correct those situations, which I remind you is the city's standard process. I was instead provided an exceptional performance evaluation in December and offered a five-and-a-half-year extension to my contract, again, not knowing of this stuff. And I haven't read the report. I have no idea what's in the report, so I am speaking with no knowledge of what's in the report, okay? I haven't had that opportunity. I have not had any allegation presented to me, or I've had an opportunity to review the report, which I understand was just finalized within the hour. So you might understand that I find this all extremely bizarre, out of process, and rushed, and I'll reserve any other comments at this time for later.
Questions for our city manager? Any discussion on the motion, again, requesting that the city manager resign? Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that it is cited in the report regarding the contract negotiations and the approval of Mr. Berry's contract, as he spoke about his performance evaluation, and I think if you look back at that meeting, Tom, I was, we met prior to that meeting. I think if we look back, I was incredibly supportive of you, even my comments. I just didn't appreciate the process, and I can understand that you're frustrated with the process and how it plays out now. I too am frustrated with the process. I don't think any of us are sitting up here feeling real comfortable as individuals, nor as the collective, and I can appreciate the frustration. I'm frustrated as well, and that's, I think, as we move forward, we have to address not just the process, but the structure that got us here. And unfortunately, in my personal opinion, when the exec team doesn't act, it falls on the rest of us to lead, and I am concerned about the fact that the exec team had this report from a professional of 40-plus years who has been through this process before. As I spoke with Pat, she had even cited the fact that she had followed up and contacted all of the people that you asked that she contact. And so it is the protections granted to us through the Sentry Code where we can call for and ask for a special city council meeting, and by having a second, the check and balance is in place, where if we feel that things are not being acted upon as fiduciaries of this city, we have that right. And I apologize if you do not like that. I don't like being here. I don't think any of us do, and so the fact is, we are here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before Alderman Wolski, I do want to point out once again that during the interview with Pat towards the end, her question to me or suggestion would be that that draft be sent to the executive council, executive part of the council, from the beginning, to which I didn't see a problem with that, because there would be given time for the final draft for consideration. To make that clear, she was the one who asked that if I saw any problems with that, considering that I expected there to be ample time for review of the final draft after release. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. Speak very briefly to some of Mr. Berry's comments, and I agree, there hasn't been a formal grievance filed. There is no paper trail that sits inside the processes we typically outline for these very challenging situations, but, but the report as much says that, that the reason that doesn't exist is because of the environment that existed. The conditions were such that, that our employees didn't feel comfortable filing a grievance, and that is, I think that's an extraordinary sign of why we are here today and why this decision is, the recommendation that's been made to us.
Alderman Padugula.
Again, without wanting to get into stuff that is going to be unpleasant for everyone, I did have one conversation with our investigator and evaluator, and she provided a lot of context about the situation, and I think that this is a very tame version of what she found and what she was telling us. Again, she didn't put in writing, I suppose we could call her and ask her, but the, the impression I had was that employees were terrified, were bullied, were belittled, and that no one in their right mind would ever speak up, and that's the reason there were no complaints. It also is critical to remember that whether there's a complaint or not at this point, people can file complaints later on about what happened, and we don't, we can't be blind if we see things, if we hear things. And again, I've ignored things repeatedly. There have been many mentions of Mr. Port's articles. I've ignored them, until that last article where I saw what appeared to be city documents. That I can't ignore. Rumors, complaints, I'm not going to pay much attention. Maybe I should have paid attention. Some, some people here did and raised these issues, but the point is, we don't have to act, and we're not held liable because nobody complained. We knew, some of us knew, at least according to her, and we should have known, and I take some responsibility for that, too. I should have dug deeper. I shouldn't have trusted, I should have been out there. I should have resisted, you know, when people complain, "Well, you shouldn't micromanage or trust me." I was told repeatedly, "Trust us, trust us, trust us." So I think there's more here, much more here, and maybe Mr. Port will, will write further posts, blog posts, maybe the media will cover them. I'm not interested in being a source for that, but I don't want to quite say this is the tip of the iceberg, but there's a whole undercurrent here that is extremely distressing. You just can't treat people that way, again, assuming what she's reported is accurate. There's much more here than meets the eye. We asked her specifically, focused report, was there a hostile work environment? Her answer is yes. Are we on the hook? The answer is yes. And I, in most situations, I've, again, encourage us to think carefully and through, but this thing has been going on for many years, perhaps not to quite the extent that mushroomed in the fall, or in December, November, but for the safety of our staff or, you know, Mr. Berry's reputation, I just, I just am uncomfortable with letting this go on further. I want to offer the civil, the least, least unpleasant option for everybody. Let's just call it a mistake. Let's just call it a mismatch, and kind of we can go on, but, but believe me, according to what the evaluator shared with me, and I think more so with other aldermen, there's a lot more here than meets the eye. And again, the issue of a complaint is irrelevant in terms of our liability. I have a feeling we could easily get, well, I don't want to inflame the thing further. I think the city has still had substantial liability, and I'm not comfortable with that continuing.
Alderman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to clarify one comment that Alderman Straight made. As part of the executive committee, I did not receive this report on Wednesday. I did not receive it till late Friday afternoon.
Good. Thank you.
Just for that clarification.
Thank you.
And, and receive the final copy, as all of you did, just prior to 11 o'clock this morning. I need a little time, I need a little time to kind of absorb what is being said in the report. I feel rushed this morning or this afternoon to make a decision. We haven't had the opportunity to receive other legal counsel. We haven't had the opportunity to receive other legal counsel, we have not had an opportunity to speak to our city attorney. We got the report from the independent counsel, who performed the job that we asked her to perform, but after that, I think that we still need legal counsel. And procedurally, I don't know how we move forward. If we take action on this report today, I don't know what the City of Minot looks like this afternoon, because we haven't had that discussion. So, it would be my preference that we have the City Manager be on a leave of absence for five to ten days, so that we could kind of complete any other investigation that we need to complete, that we can have all of the information necessary before we make a decision. If I can make that as amendment, I would make that as an amendment, I don't know if procedurally, that's the correct way to do that.
I would look to our city attorney for clarification, as an amendment or a separate motion would.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I believe Alderman Padugula's motion is already an amendment, or?
I think it was a redirected motion.
The original motion was withdrawn.
And then agreed by the second.
Okay. I think the more appropriate motion per Alderman Olson would be a motion to table this until a time certain, something like that, if that's the direction that your motion wants to go, rather than an amendment to the main motion.
Alderman Olson.
That would be my motion, Mr. Mayor, that we table this for ten days.
We have a motion to table for ten days, is there a second?
I second it, so we can talk about it.
It's tabled that there is no discussion on the table.
Okay, well, then I won't second it. Well, I'll second it, we should be able to vote.
We have a motion and a second to table for the period of ten days. Roll call, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
No.
Padugula?
No.
Straight?
No.
Wolski?
No.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Motion fails, we are back to the original motion. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a question first, for maybe the council president and/or the mayor, has there, with the final draft, was there any substantial changes? I guess I received the final draft, but it was in my spam folder from Ms. Munson, so was there any substantial revisions to that report?
Alderman Pittner, there was one brief paragraph, probably right around page twenty-two, that just referenced one of the comments made by, I believe, Margie Zietz, in reference to Alderman Olson, that just, I don't have the verbiage, but Ms. Munson agreed that it didn't provide any further substance to the draft that she removed, and that was the only change.
Thank you.
Continuation, Mayor, please. So, when I was made aware, just like all of us, of the possibility of a hostile working environment at City Hall, and I cast my vote, supporting the investigation to be conducted by outside counsel, I went into it, I think, like all of us, tried to do with an open mind, and to whatever the investigator may uncover. After reading the investigator's lengthy report over the weekend numerous times, and over the past few days, I think it's clear that there has been a development of a hostile and inhospitable working environment. I keep asking myself, what can we do to reconcile this situation? At the end of the day, we as council members need to act in the best interests of the City of Minot and its citizens. So, I ask myself, how does this affect the city's ability to do things such as hire and recruit high-level talent to department head positions, if we maintain the status quo? What message does this send to legislators that we will need to work with on projects during legislative sessions, if we are accepting of this type of a working environment? And lastly, but most importantly, what message does this send to our current staff, that have been subject to an environment such as this? How does a council member, how do I as a council member maintain trust with them, if they cannot trust me to look out for them and their concerns in a situation like this? I too have been very supportive of Mr. Berry. I think we can all agree, and I spoke to several department heads, that Tom has done a lot of great things for the city. We've made a lot of advancements, we've taken a lot of good steps forward in very uncertain and trying times. But again, I keep asking myself, if we can fix this damaged relationship, if we can mend this relationship, however, no matter how many scenarios I run through in my head, I keep coming back to the conclusion that this is not a damaged relationship. But I'm more and more confident that this is a broken relationship, and I don't know if it can be fixed.
Any further discussion on the motion? Again, requesting Mr. Berry to resign immediately. Alderman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, is, this would be a question for Alderman Padugula, he is giving the City Manager the opportunity to resign, is there a date certain on this? How much time are we giving him before we would take action?
I think the motion is on the immediate timeframe. If, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Padugula.
That is correct.
That's the second, Senator. Alderman Olson.
And then my other question, I guess, would be procedurally, as I brought up before, what is the chain of command in the situation that the City Manager is not in his current role? Who would become our acting City Manager?
Alderman Olson, I would probably even, Ms. Hendershot, if I misspeak, please correct me here, but I believe, looking at the previous circumstances, where previous city managers had retired or had resigned as well, then that duty falls on to the Finance Director to be the acting City Manager, until a new City Manager is hired, and Ms. Hendershot, if you would...
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but my understanding is, the ordinance references, when the City Manager's out of town, the Finance Director is the acting City Manager. However, as you indicated previously, the City Finance Director has taken on that role during the absence of somebody in that spot.
I believe, looking at the previous City Manager who resigned, Mr. Staub, that it was the Finance Director along with, at that time, Mayor Chuck Barney, that took on part of that role.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Thank you.
Yes. Any further discussion before the vote? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Vote passes, I would look to our City Manager, or to our current City Manager, for a reply.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members. Alderman Padugula, I certainly appreciate your offer there. I will tell you, I am not going to make a decision right now, today, possibly not till a few days, until I speak with my own legal counsel on this matter. Since my hiring together, we have focused on improving our organization, but at every turn, criticism and resistance has gotten in the way. And yes, we've had to make many tough decisions, very unpopular decisions together, because we inherited a great set of challenges that took bold and courageous decision-making to better the position of our city and our community. And I can understand, and I can empathize with those on our team that are unhappy with the decisions we've had to make. They have been challenging, they've been difficult, they have been demanding. But I stand before you, again, disturbed greatly by the fact that I was never provided the feedback that I'm getting today, nor was I ever provided the opportunity to correct it. If folks don't speak out, which is their obligation in your personnel manual, it exists inside the personnel, inside the personnel manual, there is an obligation of department heads to report. That never happened here. I was never given an opportunity to, first of all, be made aware, and second of all, do anything about it. And now, I stand here before you with this set of circumstances, I'm just, I'm appalled. So, I need some time to process, I haven't even reviewed the report. It'll be the first time that I'll hear the things that evidently you now know, as it was finalized an hour ago. I'm sorry if you feel like I've let you down, and I'm sorry if the staff feel like I've let them down. But my departure, if that is your decision, at one stage or another, will not solve the dysfunctions that exist within the team. I think there's more work to be done, whether I'm part of the equation, or whether I'm not. There is an enormous amount of work to be done, and I hope that that is covered inside the report. I look forward to reading it, I have really no comment on it, because I haven't had an opportunity, sorry about my phone, Mr. Mayor, I know that gets you excited. But I will not be making a decision till I have conversations with my legal counsel. Thank you.
Alderman Padugula.
Again, I don't want to stir things up, but according to the report, there are certain inaccuracies in what Mr. Berry has told us, the report documents, that there were, there was at least one conversation between the mayor and the City Manager as to some complaints. Mr. Berry is a very articulate, intelligent individual, I'm sure, and I know he's aware of the postings that are made on the blog, that have certain, that essentially have been fully substantiated, with just one tiny detail. So, I, you know, I understand that, you know, he may feel blindsided, but I think, again, the behavior's been going on for a long time, and, you know, he has been served notice, if not formally, certainly by means of, you know, credible sources. The other thing is, again, he was present, he was the one responsible, I very much agree that the city needs a lot of work, I very much agree that, but as Alderman Pittner said, the relationship between him and his subordinates has evaporated. I don't think there's anyone on earth they would trust him, or work for him, or with him, or work with him to carry out our directives, that's the problem. You know, we rely on the City Manager to carry out the policies we set, and I just don't see him being functional, there's no way our policies, our directives can be carried out effectively. I feel badly about that, I, again, to say that, you know, he was unaware of that, I don't think is accurate, I think you need to be aware of how you treat people, you need to be aware of how a normal individual might react. And, you know, he's labeled these accusations as scurrilous, you know, I think in one response to one of Mr. Port's posts, I wrote him, and talked with him, and offered support, and offered support to the fire chief, in terms of what I thought were groundless allegations, were very demeaning allegations, and he was very critical of Mr. Port, and said these were, reflected a colossal lack of understanding of what went on, and reamed it out as fake news. So, clearly, he was aware of what was being said, and he disparaged the sources, and according, again, according to the report, he intimidated people so much that no one dared speak up. A couple employees, Ms. Zietz did, she was our kid's school resource officer. Mr. Lakefield spoke out. You know, it's been public for at least a month now, and again, I understand that he might want a hearing, he needs some time to think about it, but if you're doing these things, if they're ongoing, you're the expert, you know better than anybody what's happening, and that's the sad part. I agree, there's a lot to be done, a lot to be changed, and I'm deeply grateful for all he's accomplished, but you just can't treat people that way, no matter what, you just can't. And then you can't pretend, you can't assert, that we encouraged or allowed you. I stood up for you, Tom, and you're saying the council authorized you to do these things, or some of them at least, and that's just not true. I'm not accusing you of anything, but please, don't accuse me of authorizing condoning your behavior, that's not acceptable.
Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Padugula, I'm afraid that there are a few things that you're not aware of, and...
Then educate me.
Well, you know, I appreciate your sensitivity on the matter, and I'm going to try to do the same. But I will say, that I, you know, things aren't as you may believe. And I don't know how much of this I can go into, but I will say that I have worked alongside with the Executive Council on the issues that were brewing in the November-December timeframe, worked closely with them, and our HR Director, and also an executive consultant, an executive HR consultant. So, I was in, working in good faith to try to correct the situation, and I just, I just don't want you feeling like that's not the case, so that's what I wanted to say about that.
It's good, I accept that, and I guess then my beef becomes with the Executive Committee, I don't know, and that's one of the recommendations from this, is that the role of that Executive Committee has to be clarified, we can't have three people speaking on behalf of seven, there are problems with open meetings laws, but I'm very concerned that three people, or one person speaks on behalf of seven, that's one of the things Mr. Berry has drummed into our heads, I think, very nicely, that we speak as a council, we act as a council, we speak with one voice, and it's not fair that all of us are represented or misrepresented as supporting something, when only three of us had a role in it. There's been no vote, none of member, no member of the Executive Committee has shared these kinds of things with me, people have shared their support for Mr. Berry, and asked me to do things to support their positions. But I think there's a fundamental problem here, if three people can suddenly act on behalf of all seven, and then all of, all seven of us are implicated in some fashion. That's a structural issue, and that's something we're going to have to address, it goes beyond you, but I appreciate you clarifying that. But it just really, really bothers me, the things were done, and said, and planned, without the seven representatives of people all fully knowing it, all fully being involved with it. And the slogan is "One Voice, One Minot." It doesn't work that way if all seven of us aren't involved. All seven of us are on the hook, and all seven of us need to be able to make some decisions as to what extent we're on the hook, or not on the hook, or how to take care of the situation. But that's a, that's a different argument. So, I appreciate the fact that you feel you consulted with the appropriate people, and you felt you were working with them, got their, "Go ahead," that makes me feel a little bit better. But then that raises another issue, which, again, doesn't so much have to do with you, but thank you for clarifying.
Alderman Padugula, without getting into a really difficult back and forth, I believe that that was part, without all of the details, of course, in the City Manager's report, as far as the internal review of what was, that, I think an internal review of what had happened was being looked at. Now, when the executive team did come together to meet with both the City Manager and the HR Director, and we took a look at what we were advised within the City Council, or within the Employment Manual, as far as potential areas that had been violated. And then, we were asked as whether or not that the process should proceed, to take a look, very much the way that many different internal reviews happen within the city every year, for a potential violation of employee, employee manual issue. Those typically don't come ever to me, to the mayor, or to the executive team, but because that this was so public, we were brought together, at least for the advisory, of whether or not it should proceed, not necessarily in the manner, but whether or not it should That is, in summary, exactly what took place. Further discussion, Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the comments, the clarification, I'm mindful of something that we talked about within the contract renewal, it's been a topic, I think, that as we sit here now, each one of us is individually in the middle of something that's going to be very reflective, and it's going to take some time to work through, to Alderman Pittner's point, but we're also here to represent the collective, and for me, it's... And for me, it's, it's the piece about judgment. Judgment and how it is viewed, how we as viewed as leadership in our judgment. And as it stands today, I can appreciate Alderman Olson's desire to have a little more time. I can appreciate some of the internal discussions that clearly I'm not on the executive team. But as it stands now, with this draft being public, we have the fiduciary responsibility, in my opinion, that we have to act now. Those possible potential claims, if we do not act because of Mr. Berry's judgment and how he has chosen to conduct himself, be it on behalf of us or not, has jeopardized and put us as fiduciaries in the position we now find ourselves. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I move the city council follow the recommendation of our independent council and terminate the city manager's employment with the city a minot for cause effective immediately, and direct staff to review the employment contract terms of the termination. I don't say that lightly, sir. And to Alderman Olson's point, I think we have to address the issue now, and I think leadership moving forward, we're going to have a host of topics to work through, and we are going to be hammered for days on end. I'm aware of that. I don't take any of it lightly. I have my own reflective fault that I play, in all transparency. I had the open meetings request that somebody thought I was conveying information to Mr. Port. Tom, I was not. I was, the one conversation in transparency that I had with Mr. Port was in regards to a gathering space meeting. I sent that in transparency just to show all of my communication that I have had with Mr. Port. So, and I'm going to leave it at that, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Straight, just for clarification, there were two recommendations for the finding. You are referring to recommendation number one?
Correct.
With review of, okay. Yeah. Alderman Straight, would you repeat the motion, please?
I move that the city council follow the recommendation of our independent council and terminate the city manager's employment with the city a minot for cause effective immediately, and direct staff to review the employment contract terms for early termination.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Padugula.
I wanted to thank Alderman Straight for being able to step back, and I apologize for letting my emotions get a little bit the best of me here a few minutes ago. It is, and I think you framed it right, it is a matter of leadership and trust and our obligation to do what's best for the city. As Alderman Pittner said, I think the relationship between Mr. Berry and his staff is broken, it's irreparable. I don't think there's any way that that can be repaired or fixed. He needs to be effective as a city manager. It's not fair to him to have such a situation where he can't do what he's asked to do or feels he has, or is tasked with doing, and I don't think that exists anymore. I don't think that's possible for him. So I think it's really in his best interest to, you know, take the face-saving way out. He chose not to do that. I think, given the seriousness of the charges, and again, Ms. Monson presented really no information, to the contrary, everybody had similar things to say. The conclusion was straightforward. I was shocked. I was stunned. I was expecting her to land a range of options, one of whom being probation or remediation. But when you read the report, I just don't know that anybody could come to a different conclusion. Maybe, yeah, I guess they could, but I just am not willing to take the risk of further litigation, of complaints, of whatever. We have to protect our people. We have to protect our staff, and we have a situation here that I just can't, in good conscience, allow to go any further. You know, I never thought I would do this. You know, like Mr. Berry, he and I have a lot in common. I feel for him and his family. You know, he can certainly consult with his attorney. I'm sure he'll sue us, but, you know, let the lawyers hassle it out, or hopefully it won't come to that. Hopefully, it'll have some sort of meaningful coming of the minds. But I just can't take the chance of further damage to the city or our employees. And I appreciate, you know, Shannon's ability to step back and frame it that way, because it is a matter of leadership, it is a matter of doing the right thing.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Olson.
I do sense throughout our conversation that there is kind of a shadow that is being cast upon the executive committee that we somehow were covering up information, or at least encouraging negative behavior or actions against our other employees. And I, I just need to say that that is not the situation. We were given a little bit of information from the city manager and from the HR director, framed as an opportunity to team build. And the support that I gave on that day was in an effort to build our team back up. That obviously did not occur. I personally, and I think through my voting record over the last 10 years, city employees will know that I've always had their back, that I have always supported them. And I hope, even though I've made some, some comments and asked some questions at this time, I want them to know going forward that that is, that is what my thought process is. I do support public employees. I think they're the backbone of our community. I wish I didn't have to be part of making this decision today. It's regretful. But I just did want to kind of clarify that.
Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. During my interview with Ms. Monson, our independent counsel, I shared with her what I was hoping to get out of this process, and, and one of the, one of my requests was an opinion and clarity on what we could do moving forward. This has obviously been a very difficult process since it, since it began in substance for the council over the last six weeks. It has clearly been a very difficult situation for, for our entire team and staff, going back not just to December, but clearly beyond that in some cases. My hope had been to, to determine whether there was an opportunity to salvage anything, because it was my belief, over the past month, as we've been waiting for this, that if there was an opportunity to salvage, that that would be an extraordinarily powerful experience, and it might really help bring us all together in some form. But the conclusions and recommendations are clear. It is not salvageable. And, and that's what I asked for. I asked for clarity. I am grateful that our independent council has provided it to me. I do not think time is going to change any, her opinion, and certainly not mine, based on findings, and, and I think the prudent thing now is to, is to act. I will be supporting the motion.
I would also just add, given the, the nature of the report, whether it's 1% or 100%, I think we can all recognize that there is substantial damage that we are going to have to fix. And moving forward, I think, given what we need to do is come together, one, as a community, as a staff, and build off this. I was hoping to see building pieces come out of this, rather than, I guess, removing the top leadership and then start anew. I am going to support the motion. I just hope that all staff understand that exactly to Alderman Olson's point, is that we are taking this as moving forward, not only with rebuilding trust, but ensuring that the community understands that we are looking out for the best interest of the full community. Any further discussion? Motion is, again, for clarification one more time. Kelly?
You can read it.
Or Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, we move the city council follow the recommendation of our independent council and terminate the city manager's employment with the city a minot for cause effective immediately, and direct staff to review the employment contract terms for early termination.
Everyone's clear on the motion. Please call the roll.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolski.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padugula.
Yes.
Motion approved. With that, we would ask the city attorney then to go through and review the contract. We would also then ask for the proper steps with HR for the process of the contract cancellation. And then we would also look to the, the finance director and other leadership that we will be coming together to talk about next steps in the very near future. Any further discussion for number four on consideration, as there is another recommendation within the report? Alderman Wolski.
The secondary recommendation is a part of the independent council's report, I think is very important, and I think it's critical that we, the council, take, take it up. I do not believe it's critical at this particular juncture, and seeing as we're going to be making other, I think, significant decisions about the, the interim leadership of the administration, I think it's okay to hold that, and we also have another meeting tonight, which may allow for some further discussion, and maybe a little more freedom on the topic, seeing this is a special meeting, and we might have a little more leeway to discuss concepts this evening, so.
Alderman Padugula.
I would second what Alderman Wolski says. I think we need to get past the trauma here of what happened today and have a little bit of time to let it soak in. I think this evening would be a good time. We certainly have the opportunity legally, more opportunity to talk about interim leadership. I think there are really some opportunities here, and I feel sad that Mr. Berry won't be a part of that. But, you know, I think we need to, in his absence, kind of think things through a little bit and proceed carefully. And the one pitch I'd make now is for, you know, absolute transparency. I'm not accusing anybody on the executive committee. I think that structure has to be looked at. We have to all work at this as a team. We can't have one or two people, you know, just, just having sole access to certain information. We have to, we have to speak with one voice, and that means we talk, we maybe argue, we maybe disagree, but we can't have secrets from each other, and we need to, you know, hash it out. So I think an organizational structure reflects that would be very positive, a very positive outcome from this. So I'd like to see us wait till tonight and maybe talk some more about that recommendation.
Further discussion on the report that is before us. Seeing none, then we have come to the end of our agenda for this afternoon. Final words, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reinforce what Alderman Olson said. The executive team has always acted in the best interest of the full city council. There was nothing ever shady or concerning, in my personal opinion. They had always, always had the best interest of the city council, the staff, the community. So I just, hopefully, if I can give you that peace of mind as a, as a remaining council. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity that I had to serve you in the time that I did. I've learned a lot. I have a lot more to learn, evidently, but I have appreciated the opportunities to learn and to grow in this position. The challenges have been many and great, as you all know, and we have really done some amazing things. And I know that you will continue that path, and I wish you and the staff the very best of success in all of your endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Berry. We've reached adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janser, second by Alderman Pittner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.